Does she know?
She needs some flashing lights.
She needs some flashing lights.
Legally, fast as you could legally.
Right.
Yes.
That's what she meant.
There you go.
It is one o'clock, Tuesday, November 2nd. It is a regularly scheduled city commission meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, ma'am.
It is Commissioner Ortiz's turn to do the pledge and the invocation, so please rise at this time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for the moisture that you bring to our land and we just give thanks to everything that you've given us. Lord, we ask that you just be in our hearts as we go through our meeting today. Be with those in the community, be with those who are listening, be with those who are here today. And, Lord, we just especially ask that you be with those who have just experienced some tragedy in their life and their households, Lord. Be with their families, their loved ones. Help comfort those who need you at this time, Lord. Lord, we just, again, thank you for everything and in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Approval of the minutes. Any changes on the minutes? I didn't see any.
I didn't see any changes here.
There was a spelling.
Oh, great.
The, and I only know that because it's Michael Knutson. It says Kurtson in the.
Okay. And they'll stand as revised. Item five, public comment. This is a time in the commission meeting that we set aside 30 minutes to, for anybody that has any comments to the commission on any items that are not on the agenda. We give you five minutes and please come forward and state your name. Hello.
Barbara Larson.
Hello.
I am a senior citizen bicyclist.
Awesome. Okay.
And there are some very dangerous intersections in Garden City. Long tally trail. I hope you can think about where these are. Campus and Harding. As I'm crossing campus, there are partial, very, very, very light lines. Not even all the way across the street. I've stood there and hit that button three, four, five times. And what it says is, "Stop when occupied." I understand that. I can't occupy it. I am, the traffic is, I can't occupy. A very good friend of mine said, "Why would I stop? You're not occupying it." Because I'm lying to you. But my life is kind of important to me. So, so I, you know, and it always, I found a couple of things interesting because downtown, your crosswalks have the little lines going this way, but as I'm on tally trail, if I'm lucky, all I have are the two white lines. I don't know if they can see those flashing lights. Sometimes I'm pretty early in the morning, but I've wondered that, how visible those lights are. The other one, which I'll be very honest, this one scared me to death. Taylor and Campbell. As I'm pulling up to cross Taylor, there were cars at the stop signs on both of those. They were there way before I got there. Okay? I don't know how long they've been waiting there. I wait because I could kind of see there was going to be an opening, so I kind of let traffic, hit the button. I start. The car that's going straight starts and the car going east, going to turn north, starts. Everyone stops, horns, horns are honking, and I'm like this going, "I got the right way." After, I calm down, I went back to that intersection. There are no lines. She, the, I could have touched that car that was turning. She had no idea that was a crosswalk. She didn't look at those flashing lights. She could have been there for a period of time. I don't know. But I tell you what, it, I, I, I got very scared. There's also absolutely no lines at Bernadine Sits. There was lines from the alley to the alley back before that walking trail was made. There's no button to push. There are absolutely no lines at all. Again, I've been caught where they're dropping their kid off and going to work, dropping their kid, and, and it's, it's not a good intersection. The city has done a fairly good job of cleaning up shrubbery, but there's two places that shrubs absolutely have to be cut. And that's Third, on Third Street, right, trying to think, it's right by the, kind of by the school.
At Georgia Matthews?
Yes. I know that they planted trees to hide some things, but the, those shrubs hide walkers and bikers. The other place is right there on Taylor. If you turn and go north towards the neighborhood Walmart.
Love it.
Again, they've planted trees to make it all nice and pretty, but very dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I'm not bashful. Okay, my name is Neil Austin. I'm a former mail carrier in the city. Moved to this town in 1961 with my wife and young children. 1964, I bought property on 12th Street. And I want to compliment the city on the beautiful swim pool, everything. I take friends and family with me and show off the city. But where I live on 12th Street, I can look one half a block north. I, I talked to the city inspections. They said anything from the sidewalk out was the police department. They did move this van in, up on the yard. But there's two trucks sitting there across the sidewalk, out into, into the curb. You can't walk through there. And I think there's surely an ordinance against that. And I think there's also an ordinance against all the stuff that is stacked from that truck all the way back. Our landfill out here looks good compared to that. And I can look at it every day, and anytime there's a funeral at St. Mary's, going to Valley View, they have to drive by that mess. I also have one block south of me, over on 13th Street, a block away from me. And I, by the way, carried mail there 40 years ago, and it looked like it, and it still looks like it. And I don't know what the city inspector is doing or are supposed to do, but I think there's an ordinance against all this in the yard.
Yeah, it's, it's on a case-by-case basis. It's not where inspectors go out, it's where individuals like you are bringing it to our attention, and then we'll have the inspectors go out and.
I appreciate that.
And write the owners.
I hate to be a griper, but I am.
No, that's okay. It's, it's your community too. I mean, it's all of our community.
You know, if we're going to call this Garden City, it needs to look like a garden.
Right.
Not a landfill. And I'm really sorry about that. I, I keep my yard up, my neighbors keep their yards up, but then you have this distractions down the street. And I'm just a little bit upset about it because the people across from this street, I've, people I have talked to, and they are afraid to complain. Let me tell you what, I've been around a block and I'm not afraid to complain. And so, that is all I have to say about it.
Okay.
Thank you for your time, but the rest of the city looks great. Eighth Street looks nice.
That's going to be good.
Except for the curb in front of the courthouse. There's a broken curb out here. I like those beautiful curb things. They, they make nice places for trucks to leave black marks when they can't get across the curb. But other than that, it, everything's beautiful.
Okay.
I said my piece and it was a whole tickle now.
Thank you.
Neil, that handsome guy that wears his hair like I do, we'll get your address so that we can get that to the right people on staff.
He's armed, isn't he?
Yes. Any, anyone else during this time of public comment? Any items that are not on the agenda? All right, moving on to item 6A.
Item 6A, the governing body has asked to consider and approve allowing the mayor to proclaim the week of November 15th through 19th, 2021, as American Education Week in Garden City, Kansas.
Entertain a motion on this item.
I move to approve the, allowing the mayor to proclaim the week of November 15th through 19th, 2021, as American Education Week.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. I have been requested to present that on the 15th for the school district, so I'll read that on that day, not at this time.
Item 6B, the governing body has asked to consider and approve allowing the mayor to proclaim the month of November 2021 as Careers in Construction in Garden City, Kansas.
Entertain a motion on this item.
I move that we approve allowing the mayor to proclaim the month of November 2021 as Careers in Construction Month.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Did I say October?
Say what?
Sorry, did I say October or I say November?
It's supposed to be October.
Oh, okay, it says November here, sorry.
We'll print and sign you a new one, we'll just read November where it says, or October where it says November. We can do that.
We can do that.
On the fly, and I think this needs to save five million, not 10 million?
Five million, I'm, I'm assuming that was five million. That's how I was going to read it. So, the proclamation reads, "Whereas, Careers in Construction Month is an annual month designated to help increase public awareness of opportunities available in construction, trades, professions, and whereas during this month employers, associations, and schools are encouraged to conduct job fairs, panel discussions, and local community events to inform students of the vast employment opportunities in construction. And whereas the construction industry is one of our nation's largest industries, employing more than 5 million individuals in the United States, and whereas we are pleased to honor the construction trade profession and the critical role they play in development of our community and region, and whereas through a collaborative effort that reaches policymakers as well as local educators and high school students, our goal is to effectively address some of the issues that have contributed to chronic labor shortages and misperceptions of careers in construction to develop a skilled workforce for the future. And whereas the Builders Association and the Garden City Community College Carpentry Program are dedicated to enriching the educational experience of students by offering them firsthand exposure to the real world of the building industry through Builders Association and the Garden City Community College Carpentry Membership, educational programming, and networking opportunities. Now therefore, I, Roy Cessna, Mayor of the City of Garden City, do hereby proclaim, I'll say October 2021, as Career in Construction Month in the City of Garden City urging all citizens to join in on this special observation. Signed and sealed the second day of November 2021, Roy Cessna, Mayor." And we do have people here from the, the program. If you want to speak, do you want to speak? Or we can get a picture with everybody? Nobody wants to speak?
Oh, yeah, there's a speech.
If you just want to, if you want to come to the stand and just kind of explain a little bit about the program?
Okay, well, my name's Ross Addison. I'm the professor, instructor. Do not have a doctorate, so I, I have that going for me. These are my high school students, so the City of Garden City, or the City of Garden City, Garden City Community College has also, we've developed a program right now to get guys in the high school field as, like, to, to bring them into the college. So I have guys here from Garden City High School, Lakin High School, and Holcomb High School as of the moment. We grew the program from eight last year to 23, so we've almost, what is that, quadruple the program? Justin and I here, we're, we're working on revamping it a little bit more though, because right now we're, we're doing a lot of, it's hard to explain it, but like, we don't just go into shop and, and work around, right? So we do a lot of different things, like looking at plans, what is that, module five? We looked at plans, stuff like that. Right now, we're doing a review of basic hand tool and power tool operations, because we're, we're about to be in the shop almost consistently every day from, from hopefully November all the way to May when they graduate and stuff, so that's what we're working on right now.
So do these gentlemen get any certification to?
Yeah, so they get.
As a post-secondary or as a transition?
Yep, so they'll, they'll all get a cert, at the college we call it a cert A, so they'll get a one-year certificate as well as, they also get national credentials, so they'll do forklift and telehandler safety. They already got the telehandler side. We just, with this big group and one guy, we kind of ran out of time right now to do the forklift certification and, and actually, old Mr. German back here, he, he was the one that said, "Hey, don't do forklift anymore, do telehandler." Because like, little things like that, it's like, they don't use a forklift, out on the job site, they use a telehandler, right? So using, people from the Builders Association has helped build the program. It's only two-year program, right? So there's still a lot to learn, a lot to be able to do. Garden City Code has been a big one too, trying to, trying to keep up with that, because when you're, when you teach at Huguenot High School for four years and we're building sheds, you, you don't have to do certain things to what Garden City Code was. So like last year, we built our own trusses and, you know, I got this guy behind me that might have a company that does that, you know, and I didn't realize, you know, that it has to be approved by an engineer or built at his plant kind of deal. So just learning little things like that as well as, has been eye-opening, because I've never had to deal with that, right? So, yeah.
So Ross, are you able to get them locally? I mean, because we would love to have builders in our area, and I know builders are, are you able to have them, help place them locally and with builders or?
That's what we're trying. So right now, so like last year, I had multiple, it, it's hard when some of these kids are already established, right? So I have kids that work at Home Depot still. They didn't want to leave Home Depot, right? "Hey, I got a job, I got a good job, it pays decent, right? I'm not in the element." So that was one thing, it was like, then why, why'd you come take this program? He hired, Justin behind me, he hired one of my guys, Wally, Jarrett Walters is his name. Everyone else, so like I said, I have two working at Tyson, you know, they're making $21 an hour. There's not much construction industry that pays $21 an hour, and he's like, "Hey, I'm content with where I'm at right now, like things for everything," but it's just hard, right? So you have to have a passion for it, not, not only a passion, but like you have to want to do it. That, that was what was tough last year about job placement. But hopefully this year, we, we do an interview process and stuff at the end and able to place some of these kids that don't want to further on their education. And I know I have a couple, want to go to Forhays or, or Pitt State to further their education, and they want to do like management side of stuff, so I can't blame them for that.
Good.
Awesome. Well, I'll come down and we'll all gather around and get a picture.
Perfect. Everybody? I want to stand up here by myself. No, you're short, you're short.
Professor Ross will help.
One, two, three. One, two, three. Got it.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you very much. Oh, indeed. We're sound local though. Old Rupp reminded me, we did have a, we did have a student, and he's probably doing the most success, probably the most success story is, he ended up going to McAllen Gordon.
Oh, wow.
Mr. Rupp in the back there, he, he reached out to me like, "Hey, do you have anyone that could, anyone that you have, right?" Well, he's one of them, wasn't great at tests, but he was a hard worker, right? And he was a local Garden City High School kid, and right now, like, did you guys pay for him to move to Wichita or?
No, they didn't pay. Well, I don't know, no, they did pay for him to move to Wichita, he wanted to.
Yeah.
Okay.
And they're, they're, I mean, McAllen Gordon's based out of Wichita in Kansas City area, so that worked out perfect for him. Well, I try to keep in contact with him. About every two weeks, we talk and stuff, and, and he's, he's thriving now and doing pretty fairly well for himself. And, yeah, and it worked out perfect because his girlfriend was going back to Wichita State to finish her degree and stuff like that, so that is a little success story about him and, and so, because he, he was always a pain in the butt, because he just always wanted to, "I just want to work, I just want to work." Well, you got to do these tests to get the certificate, right?
Sure.
It makes no sense for you to be in the program if you don't get these certs to, to back up your.
Sure.
Back up your work ethic, so, yep.
Well, thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Glad to see you guys.
Thank you, guys.
Good luck, guys, in your education and your careers. Thank you.
You guys need to recruit some girls too. I know this is like.
Yeah.
Girls who are good in construction, girls can work.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, yeah. They all graduated in one year, so. Your daughters. Hey, my, my daughters are hard workers.
That's right.
They work harder than my boys.
I had, I had a daughter in the construction business.
Okay, item C, moving on.
Item C, the governing body has asked to consider and approve free vehicle admission for the weekend closest to Veterans Day this year and for years to come to active, inactive, or veteran members of any branch of service presenting military identification or proof of service. Kristy.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. What he said.
Yeah.
We've come before you in years past, and this year, we just figured to kind of save you some time and present it for now and in the future, to give free access to active, inactive, and veterans of the various branches if they provide military ID or proof of service on the weekend closest to Veterans Day.
Sounds good. Any questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
I'll make motion to approve the request for free vehicle admission for the weekend closest to Veterans Day for this year and for years to come to active, inactive, or veteran members of any branch of the service presenting military identification or proof of service.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 7A, congratulations to the City of Garden City on the occasion of receiving the World Water Park Association's Leading Edge Award. Jennifer and Erin.
Yeah. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. So during your last regularly scheduled meeting, Erin and I traveled to San Antonio. I'm sure you saw on Facebook, we posted a little picture in the airport, and then a video of us receiving this award. I don't think maybe either one of us, maybe Erin realized it before we got there, but I don't think I realized how big of a deal this award was before we went. I thought Garden Rapids, Rapids was super cool, and we had done a really great job, and so of course we were winning an award. Why not? But when we showed, I mean, I expect us to win more, no, I'm just kidding, but when we showed up there and we realized that the gentleman who was sitting two chairs away from us was, his family had developed a company who was building the Great Wolf Lodges across the country, and he was, he was getting kind of like a lifetime achievement award. And then as they started to roll the projects in front of us, and we realized that every other project in this slate was somewhere between $30 and $50 million. One of them was in Dubai and was this beautiful all-white water slides, you know, I mean, just something out of a magazine. And we realized that we were the only municipality receiving this award. And it just, as they started to describe to us that municipalities don't win these types of awards typically, this is the World Water Park Association, and people are really going out bang for your buck. And so these Leading Edge Awards are people who are doing things that no one else is doing. And so to think of little Garden City here in Kansas, winning this award, I, I was kind of shocked and, and in awe at that point. And it was, it was a great experience. Erin got to stay and enjoy the conference, but we brought back, for you to put in your display case somewhere, your award for Garden Rapids at the Big Pool, and I also brought back one of the copies that describes the award and describes our project, and then you can also look at some of the other projects that are in there. So thank you for allowing us both to go to this and also just for allowing us to get this project done, so. Erin, you want to say anything else?
I don't know what else to say to that. No, it was really cool. One of the, just a tidbit from the, the conference, they, they don't run education sessions when they run their trade show, so I kind of hung out with the guys at Splash Tacular and WTI, and, and as they were playing video of our park, it was definitely the talk of the conference. And it was really cool to watch people's reactions, watching people come off the fly time and, and obviously run, run the slipstream down, so. Great job to, obviously, the commission, the design team, Jennifer, all the above. Definitely deserve this accolade, but what a cool group to be in, so.
So Erin, I have a question. So was Splash Tacular or anybody else there when they were highlighting some of these things?
Yes.
Okay. I wonder who else was also there, so.
WTI, Splash Tacular, Confluence did, was not able to make it, but outside of them, everybody else was there.
Oh, that's neat. What a great group.
Can we get everybody together and all the commissioners together and get a photo right quick with the, with the plaque and everything?
And Jennifer and Erin as well. And, and I'll sit in front of the mic. This really shows that we built something unique. You know, the commission, commissioned staff to look for something unique that makes us a, because we had the big pool, but as we were moving forward, you know, from the commissioner's standpoint, we wanted something unique. And I think this award really shows that we built something unique for Garden City, but where it will become a destination location and attract people to Garden City. And I think that really with this award, it knocked it out of the park and shows that we did, the staff really did that with the help of the input from, Jennifer did an outstanding job getting input from all the patrons in our community and surrounding area, but I think with this award, it really shows that they truly hit the goal of what the commission wanted, and I think this award really approves that. So let's get a picture right quick.
Aaron's got to be careful about getting too close to the prop because. One, two, three, one more. One, two, three. Thank you. Oh, I'd be happy to.
I'd love to.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I hadn't thought of that. I was just going to put it in the, you know, in the trophy case.
Yeah, well, I know. Well, yeah, when you said all the other.
With all your other.
Well, with all the other cool stuff that was in there, that would be really fun to, for what's next to come at Garden Rapids.
Well, and talking about the Garden Rapids at the Big Pool.
We called that a segue.
That's right. That's a segue.
Good job, Mayor.
Item B is an update from Parks and Recreation Director Stuart on the 2021 pool season.
Uh, yeah, so what a season it was for inaugural season. We, you know, obviously led off with the award, but we'll talk about some of the things that we experienced this year, starting with admissions. So early on, Baker King had put together a projected budget and admissions, and so that's in here along with our historical data from 2019 and 2018. So you can see the star at the bottom there, we did sell 3,113 annual passes, and, and when I say annual, I'm talking about punch passes, single fam, single and family. We did offer a couples pass, we actually did not sell any, so just the point of note. Admissions.
Did we sell that many, or that's how many admissions came from using a pass?
That's how many, sorry, let me clarify. That's how many admissions came from using a pass. Thank you for that.
But through, but through the combination of all the different sales of passes and everything, that's the total number.
Yeah, that's the total amount of admissions that came through that we marked as a no-charge admission.
Okay.
Okay? 34,000. Okay. Um, thirty-four thousand, uh, above what we projected in, uh, dollars for admissions, uh, for the year in the gate revenue. Um, a hundred and twenty thousand, almost a hundred and twenty one thousand over twenty nineteen. So just to put that in perspective.
Amazing.
Um, seventy-two hundred swimmers more than we did, uh, than the projected amount, the forty-six ten. So we had the the fifty-three was seventy-two hundred more, twenty-seven thousand six hundred more swimmers than twenty nineteen. So all in all, um, you know, if we're looking at, from my point as a Parks and Rec director, if we're looking at engagement, we have engaged a lot more people into this park, which is is one of my bigger goals. So the daily average attendance, uh, just for reference, uh, so about five percent of the daily admissions were those pass holders, uh, or thirty-eight a day. We did about seven hundred and forty, if you look at the whole year. Now, that does not include the days that we were shut down. That's operational days only. But seven hundred and forty people per day, we were projecting five thirty-five. Now, part of what you have to understand, when they put these projections out there, they're actually probably looking five years ahead. So first year, we're obviously going to be above that. Um, but we need to monitor that as we're going forward, looking five years back, that's where we should be or better. Um, and again, when you're looking, uh, four hundred and thirty-one person increase per day over twenty nineteen. Uh, passes sold. So this is where we can see, um, this is actually where we did not do as well. Um, we did not sell as many as they projected us to sell. Um, so we were about nineteen thousand dollars, nineteen thousand less on the punch pass sold. Uh, and that's doll, I'm talking dollars, sorry. Um, uh, five thousand dollars less than the, uh, projected on the single annual. And family was really close, especially when you add the add-ons, uh, that they didn't account for. Uh, we were about two hundred and ten dollars less. So if you count the the add-on dollars from that. And I think one of the reasons for this is you have to go sixteen times before the punch pass actually pays off. Now, that was actually designed on purpose, but you're going to travel, you're going to go sixteen times. At a three dollar entry rate, I don't think people are really probably thinking far enough ahead of how many times that they're going to go. And I think that's proven by how many daily admissions we have. Now, can I count that, you know, we know we got a lot of outsiders in, so they may not have got a pass. So those may be unique visits. And that's one of the things I want to try to figure out if we can collect add-on, how many unique visitors versus how many return visitors. Um, I don't know that I have a good way to do that yet. But, uh, again, we were, we were kind of undersold in, uh, in these passes. Uh, again, when you're looking at single season, twenty-five visits before that single annual pass pays off. Fourteen visits and I'm assuming twelve dollars a visit for four people on the family pass, so. Um, so the next one, uh, event, one of the things, uh, we projected out there, it was actually projected fairly low in events. Um, so it looks like we just absolutely killed it, but I'm going to be honest, we were really conservative when we put that out there. Um, all night swims were very popular. Um, I think you can, and if you combine, because we did movie night, we put out the poll, people just want the night swim. So if you actually combine that with our, just the night swim, uh, our total was seven hundred and forty-five people, three thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars, which eclipses the rest of them. So and realistically, you should add those together. So that's the third Friday of the month that we did an event on. Couple of things that we aren't looking to do again is probably deck art. We didn't get a lot of that. I think we can transition, transition that just to another night swim or another adult night, something like that. And I think we're actually going to get better reception. Twelve and under, twelve and under, we ran every Tuesday morning. Uh, we only got a hundred and fifty-four people. I, it's just not worth doing. So that's one that will probably go away for next year. Cabana rentals, obviously, we didn't get the cabanas in until mid-August. Um, so we didn't really have a lot of revenue generated. We did use the full cabana at the south end of the pool to do a lot of those rentals. We did have twenty-three, and these are in hours, so twenty-three hours rented. And then, uh, one pool rental, which is the full two-hour rental, um, for fifteen hundred. So that left a eighty-seven thousand dollar shortage based on the projected. And and I think as we get to the totals here, you'll see where that comes into play. So again, uh, concessions, total revenue, uh, better than projected. We were about twenty-five thousand, almost twenty-six thousand over what we projected. Um, sixty-three thousand over what we made in twenty nineteen. So pretty good concessions year. Um, our biggest issue is the ability to keep things stocked. So. Chemical cost, um, sixty-one thousand dollars, six hundred dollars, sixty-one thousand, six hundred dollars less than twenty nineteen, seventy-seven thousand, four hundred dollars less than twenty eighteen. So it helps when you keep the water in the pool. That being said, um, we were losing water. Uh, one of the oversights was, uh, these one-way valves. There's sixteen of them that did not get installed and they're two-inch pipes. Uh, we, so, and I'm going to flip to the next one. So when you look at this, even with that going on, it was hard for us to recognize that there was an issue because we were saving so much water compared to what we used to do. And in fact, what happened is when we got to the point where we shut down and expected that water to trend down versus the splash out and those, you know, the higher temps evaporating, that didn't happen. And it kept going. And that's what triggered us to say something was wrong. So we did that investigation, um, and got those back. And I'll, I'll touch back on that. But just what a dramatic change it is in chemical costs. I expect to see better savings, but we were a little high over our projected cost of twenty thousand, uh, partly because some of the water was leaching out. So water use, saved twenty-five million gallons for this year. And that's with sixteen two-inch pipe leaks. So I anticipate to see a lot better numbers, even more so than that next year. Uh, you can kind of look at the month by month there, uh, and see where August and September, August was pretty good, but September, you know, closed the gap. Um, we averaged about sixty-five, just under sixty-five thousand gallons a day. Um, once we discovered the missing valves in August, we got those replaced. Uh, when we checked the water, it dropped down to about two thousand gallons a day, uh, or seven thousand gallons a day, once you add the backwashing in. So reasonable estimate for next year, we'll save in another additional two point nine million to three million gallons. That's my best guess. Um, but the nice thing is, is we were still quite a bit lower and that looks to improve quite a bit, which will also improve that chemical cost, um, dramatically. So again, our gate revenue and our recovery rate was a little short based on what we projected. Um, in in a large portion of that, uh, we were short over the projected, seventy-one thousand, seven sixty-eight. So, um, you know, Matt and I discussing this, it looks like we knocked it out of the park, except for that one item, which is those rentals. And I think there's a direct correlation being short in those rentals of why we didn't hit that revenue number. So I do anticipate hitting that revenue number next year. Uh, expenses. So you'll see the note there, um, six hundred and nine thousand is what's going to come across in the budget sheets, but really that includes a hundred and thirty-five thousand of startup costs. So when you drop that back out, you're down to four seventy-three. So again, we were a little higher. If you look further into that, there are still some one-time startup costs. And the example I'll use is concessions. Like we had to buy the pretzel maker, the, uh, and I love this machine, the Snowy four thousand, which is the snow cone machine. So, so these are one, like, we're not buying those next year. So, um, those are some one-off purchases. And the more you drill down in the line items, there's a handful of that. We'll buy Life Vest, but we're not going to have to buy a hundred and forty of them.
Hmm.
Right?
That's right.
Um, you know, camera and security systems, forty-two thousand of that one thirty-five. So I think relatively for our first year, we did okay, uh, especially when you start looking at the one-time expenses. Um, again, I know it's lower than we were wanting, but twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, nine, ten percent cost recovery, we're closer to fifty-eight. That, that, I mean, we're, we're moving, we're trending in the right direction. And the idea is we need to close that gap even more next year. Uh, just, uh, comparison, because this always seems to be a favorite topic, operational days and weather. Um, total potential of eighty-five days, we were closed for ten, uh, four days over one hundred degrees, thirty-seven days over ninety degrees. Um, and obviously a hundred-degree days, that was about half of what we've had in the past. We closed the gap on the ninety-degree days a little bit, but we were still, for, may not have felt like this, but for all intents and purposes, it was a cooler year for us. So. So looking ahead, and I, I know that's kind of blocking it, but that's our new splash pad. Um, the one on the right is the charger. The one on the left is the giraffe. Uh, we have three apparatuses that are in the top right corner. One's an elephant, one's a rhino, and one's a fox. And yes, these were picked intentionally to mirror the animals that we have in our zoo or have been in our zoo, the elephant. Um, with the, uh, Garden Rapids, uh, kind of centerpiece spray. So splash pad this week is, should be completely installed, tested and run. And then they'll turn right around and winterize it. And then what we're hoping for, weather-dependent, is maybe May, May first of next year to see if we can't get that open, do a grand opening event, uh, and have everything running then. So no May storm, snowstorms for next year, hopefully.
Yeah.
And then, of course, we went over the award. So with that, uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Go ahead. Well, I know that there's that, there's that street that's between the Garden Rapids and then also the, the baseball field. I'm curious about what the anticipated, um, when it's going to be finished and.
Second street?
Is that what it is? I, I never know what the street is. I use it all the time. I have no clue what it is.
I believe their, their, uh, the paving is done. I, I mean, I can't tell you exactly where it is, but, uh, the paving is done. They should be finishing up, uh, the project closeout in the next couple of weeks. Correct me if I'm wrong here, Matt, based on your understanding.
Yeah.
I've been down a couple of times, but I was.
You're supposed to be coming. No, let's keep guessing.
Well, you were real close, Aaron. Actually, all the paving is done with the exception of the little turnaround area at the very south end of Second Street. And that should be done probably Monday or Tuesday. So it's going to wait for the temperature to warm up to pave that. And the only thing that's left is the striping and the street will be opened up. So hopefully within two weeks, like.
Nice.
Mr. Stewart said, so. Yeah, he did a really good job on the pool, too. So did, so did Jennifer.
Yeah. Any other questions?
I just want to know about your parking. I know that, you know, we, we opted just to overlay the parking and how, how the parking lot fare. And then all, I mean, I know that was there adequate parking this year. I was curious about, I went down a couple of times and we had to park clearway, which didn't bother me because you were walking, but I'm just wondering.
So it's, it's kind of the tale of two cities. Um, we were running really strong, uh, up until we had to close for COVID for a week. Uh, there were definitely days that there were parking issues, but generally speaking, I think there, there, um, there was plenty of parking, obviously in July, August, um, after things kind of settled in. You're ran, you're going to get days where the zoo has an event, the pools run an event, and then there's games over at Clint Lightner, and that's going to be an issue. But again, that's, those are kind of one-offs every now and then. So generally speaking, with the street parking off of Maple, I think we're okay. Um, so just to kind of put it in perspective, I, I ran some averages and I should have probably shared this earlier. Um, June, we averaged nine twenty-one at the pool every day.
Wow.
Uh, July was seven twenty-six. So we did tail off a little bit. Um, after we had closed for COVID, so for the rest of the year, we averaged three forty-three.
Hmm.
And so there was a definitely, like, we were, we were still kind of hanging on to that steam, but between not being able to staff certain areas and that COVID shutdown, we really just, you saw a drop off. Now, part of that's natural. Kids are going back to school. Uh, but I do think that, that the, the COVID shutdown kind of ran us out of a routine and people sought other things to do, but they couldn't come to us.
You anticipate, uh, swim events, too, for next year as well, right? Is that still in the works?
Uh.
Like swim competition?
Like a meet?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, yes, we will host a meet. We hosted one meet this year. Um, this year, uh, because it was the league championship, we did it at no admission charge. But when we run league events, we can charge a five-dollar admission. So, uh, yes, we anticipate running at least one. Um, I would say our max would probably be two a year.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Good job.
Good job.
Thank you.
Oh, you'll see more of him.
Hold our things.
It's like he's all on all of it today.
Great.
All right. Item C, Mayor Sessna and I would like to take the opportunity to kind of come up front here and recognize some individuals who won safety awards for the second quarter of twenty twenty-one. We're a little late in doing second quarter, so we'll do second quarter today and then third quarter, I believe, at one of the next meetings. And I'll read off with the microphone and then we'll do the picture over here. Is that okay, Jamie? All right. First up, Christie Rojas, Service and Finance.
Who is not here today?
Christie's not here today, accepting the word on her behalf. No, just kidding. Uh, Christie Calderon, wastewater. Yeah, come on up.
She is here today.
Hi.
There you go. Congratulations.
Okay.
We'll stand, we'll stand your face.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christie.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Steve Greco, Police Department.
He's not here, sir.
Steve Greco's not here. Lucy Mena, Service and Finance. Lucy's not here. Maybe we'll catch them at the next meeting, too. Kent Potor, he's here.
Ah.
He's on right now.
Storm didn't hide him that well.
Yeah.
There you go, sir.
I have a wish, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Good job.
Julio Soldana, IT and Communications. I saw Julio. He's not, no? Let's see. I keep losing my spot. Lucas Donovan, Fire. Congratulations. Robert Ojeda.
The next two nights are not here.
Okay? That means Andrea Wesley. I'll say her name, so everybody knows that she's safe. Anita Garcia, Parks. Congratulations. I thought you were here just to cheer on him.
Thank you.
Partially right. Javier Hernandez.
He worked last night?
Jessica Bernaski?
Woo!
Yeah!
All right!
Jeremy Moore, Fire. Congratulations, sir.
That's why you dress up, right?
One, two, three. Thank you.
Billy Vinaueva, Electric. There, sir. Congratulations.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tammy Salsada? All right, we'll catch some of those. Uh, have they left yet? Everybody that's received one, if, if the folks that were received one would like to, uh, take it, all come down together and take a picture?
They're gone.
They're gone? Okay, that was, uh.
That was a great idea.
We'll pick up on that idea later. So, uh, Wimberly, would you, like, I don't know that we've adequately introduced you to the commission, so if you'd like to come up. Wimberly is, I'll let her introduce herself. She is responsible for the safety, uh, program working out of the Human Resources Department. And she can, uh, uh, just introduce herself and talk about maybe some of the things that she's going on, uh, just. and talk about maybe some of the things that she's going on, uh, just to add emphasis to how important safety is in this organization. Wimberly?
Sorry for trying to spot you, you're good.
Good afternoon, everybody, my name is Wimberly Rodriguez, and, um, like you said, I started here in September as the new safety coordinator, and part of my job is to keep track of the instances that we currently have, and then see how we, we can prevent those going, going, uh, in the future, stopping those from happening. And, um, we meet with the Safety Committee monthly, and part of this new incentive program, it's changed from years past where this is a self-recognition, so employees can, you know, submit kudos to themselves when they do something good, uh, safety-wise, so like keeping up with safety sheets, uh, bringing up initiatives for safety in the workplaces, uh, keeping their workforce free of hazards. Um, and so, we want to recognize them and also encourage more people to participate in the program. If we can have that, that would be great, so, unless you have any questions?
Any questions? I just want to say, uh, welcome to the, the city, and thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, and on a personal note, Troy, it's good to see you. You were my first-ever boss.
Thank you, Wimberly. Uh, Item D, Public Works Operations Manager Tyler Patterson will present the 2021 Fall Cleanup Report. Tyler?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners, uh, my name's Tyler Patterson, Public Works Operations Manager here. I'll be presenting your 2021 Fall Cleanup Report. We started fall cleanup this year on October fourth, and we concluded that on October eighteenth. We had many residents that utilized this reservice that the city provides, uh, which is a really good deal, keeps the city clean, you know, and keeps clutter out of alleys and stuff like that, it's, uh, can become a safety issue at some point. We had two-hundred-and-nineteen loads that were hauled to the landfill, and that totaled two-hundred-and-thirty-five tons, or four-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand pounds. There, there was also, along with that, a hundred-and-seventy-five loads of just tree limbs that were hauled to another site that we have here. We had four departments within the public works, uh, that helped with this, traffic, solid waste, recycling, and also street, which makes up the majority of it. We, uh, you know, it's a good time, our guys come together, and it's, it's a big, uh, kind of a coming-together team event that takes place, uh, for two weeks. Uh, they, they totaled two, twelve-hundred-and-sixty hours, uh, for this two-week cleanup. We did have a day, they came in on a Saturday to just help with tree limbs, and there was an abundance of tree limbs this year, so we, we tried to stay on schedule, and so they came in on a Saturday and worked for, for that. During this two-week cleanup, Waste Connections, owner and operator of the landfill, and also Finney County, uh, they, they give us a discounted rate per ton out there at the landfill. With that, we, we saved, uh, ten-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars and sixty-seven cents, with a total expense for the city of seventeen-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars. That, that rate is usually forty-four-fifty-three per ton, so we get a discounted rate, it's really good, helps out. Like I mentioned, you know, this, this time of year, our guys really come together, they work as a team. We actually have two crews that go out, and they just hop from basically neighborhood block to block. It's, it's really nice that we didn't have any injuries this year, I mean, you think about it, every stop, you have something sharp, you know, nails sticking out of boards, heavy, kind of awkward objects that you got to deal with. Actually, I went out one day and we were, I was helping them with some, a roll of carpet, and it was about fifteen feet long, and that thing, it had rained the night before.
No.
So, it was from maybe forty pounds to two-hundred-and-forty pounds. But, no, they came up together really well, and it's, uh, a good thing that the city provides. So, with that, I'm happy to ask any questions you have.
So, I was asked, this, this question was asked on the forum, and we were, you know, we had that, and, and some of the, one of the questions was, what, what program would you get rid of? In a way, it's like, this is a very important, like, job, I mean, it's, it's used throughout the city, which, you know, the public doesn't realize, and they don't know when you guys come out, but we try our best to get that information out, but it wasn't the fact that I would actually want to get rid of the program, it's to the fact that I wanted to just, you know, make it known to everyone that we do offer that service, and what you guys do is, is, you know, awesome, just to keep the beautification of Garden City, you know, clean and, and looking good, so. Yes, sir, thank you. Yeah, I was just going to say, this is one of the best-used programs, I mean, in the city, and people really appreciate it. Um, and I, I really, you know, I know that they got behind, but I mean, that even gave people more opportunity to put stuff out. But, um, but I really appreciate, like I said, you, um, making sure that, like you said, keeping our city beautiful. And this idea of safety, I thought it was, and Wimberly talked about, it's really the safety issues. Um, I know some things disappear, you put them out and they disappear overnight, I know it's not you guys. So, um, but I think that the neat thing about it is, is the opportunity to really, um, gives the residents pride in our, our community, so. I, I really appreciate these spring and fall cleanups, I know they're, they're expensive. I do appreciate the county giving us, or Waste Connections giving us a bit of a break, so that's, that's kind of nice, so, thank you.
Any other questions?
Tyler, I've got a question for you, this is by far the least amount on labor we've spent, which is really, I mean, I get total expense as a combination of both soft cost and hard cost, I'm glad you tracked both, but... That is by a significant margin, the least amount we've ever spent on labor, what do you attribute that to?
Well, you know, we, I think some of it is, uh, we did make one change at the landfill, and we actually implemented this with our solid waste department. We, we have, uh, our trucks that go into the scale, well, now we have a tear weight, so they know what the truck average weighs. So, that's one less stop that they have to make, they don't, you know, they basically weigh in, and they don't have to stop when they weigh out, so that, I mean, that time adds up significantly when you're at the landfill, you know, four times a day waiting in line behind trucks. So, I think that might have something to do with it, for sure. You know, like, these guys have been working as a team for many years, we got some new employees, and, uh, they have some good folks that are teaching them kind of the ropes and everything. You know, that's really all I can think of.
Okay, all right, and I know we're down a few people everywhere, but, uh...
Yeah, yeah.
But, uh, I would imagine that that would, if, you know, if we had fewer people out, that we, we would go longer than the two weeks, it seems like we always do kind of go into a...
Yeah.
A, a, a third week that's not advertised, but we're still doing that, this work. Did that not happen necessarily as much this year?
No, it didn't, we, I think we, uh, got done in the time that we planned on getting done. And that Saturday really helped out with picking the tree limbs up, you know, not having to go to a different site and deal with that, so.
And not having that extra week of callback, one, one theory I have, but I don't know that we'll be able to prove it out, is perhaps the public had stuff out before we got to their area, maybe more. We have a, we have a lot of callbacks, um, you missed my property, uh, sometimes that's legitimately the case, other times it shows up after the day, um, but we go back and, and get it anyway, so I didn't know if there was maybe less callbacks this year.
I'd, I'd have to look at that, I'm not sure on that one yet, so.
The numbers, the numbers are impressive.
Thank you, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see. Where are we at, okay. Water Resource Manager Jones will provide an update to the governing body regarding the request from Patriot Land Development LLC to extend city water utility to the proposed Country Acres development located outside the corporate limits of the city of Garden City. Fred?
Good afternoon, uh, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, just wanted to give you an update on this project, at the September seventh meeting of the governing body, the Water Department was authorized to work with PEC to determine, uh, the impact of the proposed Country Acres subdivision on the city water system. Uh, staff have received, uh, last week, a technical memorandum outlining the results of that study, and the evaluation of the model indicated that the distribution system pressure would be approximately fifty PSI or higher at the development location, and that total available fire flows would be around thirteen-hundred gallons per minute. In other words, the development would not significantly, uh, affect the pressures or available fire flows of the existing system. Uh, it appears that based on the assumptions made within this evaluation, the distribution system can adequately support the added demand of the development. Uh, city staff has shared the results with the developer and their engineers, uh, to work with them in negotiating a development agreement that will outline the infrastructure needs, and if an agreement is reached between, uh, ourselves and the developer, we would present that proposed agreement to the governing body, uh, formally, to extend water service at a future meeting. Uh, one other thing that will need to be discussed as part of that, um, discussion is the pre-annexation, uh, agreements that we traditionally have done, uh, when we extend water outside the city limits. Um, and just as a reminder, Patriot Land Development has submitted, uh, and received, uh, preliminary plat approval uh, to establish a subdivision outside the corporate limits of the city. Uh, the site is a hundred-and-eight-point-one-one acres, and is situated southeast of Mary Street and Farmland Road, and will consist of primarily one-acre lots. Subdivision, uh, consists of twenty-three lots slated for development in the first phase. With full build-out, uh, the preliminary plat included eighty-four total lots. Just provided for your information, uh, if you have any questions, I'm available.
Any questions? Thanks, Fred.
Item F, G, and H are all staff reports, uh, for your review, if you have questions for those, we'd be happy to try to answer them. Meetings of note, uh, several items on there, uh, and a, a few evening events coming up over the next, uh, two weeks, so RSVP through C-Lin if you haven't already. I think we're ready for the appropriation ordinance.
I did want to ask a question, Matt, and, because I know that, um, November third, are they going to be, I know that they're holding, are they holding the chat meeting here, or are they going to, in this room? Do you know, C-Lin, or?
I think they're scheduled in the meeting room.
Across the hall.
Yeah, because I was hoping that, I mean, I've got to be out of town for, um, medical, for my dad, but I didn't know if they were going to record that or not, or could we, I would, I'm really interested, I just, I didn't know if they were going to record that or not, or can it be recorded, or?
Could, I don't know if we could record it, but...
We can record it, that's what Jamie says.
I would appreciate that, I, I mean, I'm very interested, but unfortunately, I cannot attend in person, so. If that works, I don't know, is it hosted by you?
I think it, the only, it might be difficult if they're very PowerPoint-based in their presentation, you'd have to time that a little bit, but I think you could at least hear what they were saying, and to the best of our ability, we'd give you the copy of the PowerPoint, and maybe you could
I would appreciate that.
make out which slide they were on, but yeah, that would be...
No, I would appreciate that.
And it would probably be useful for other reasons, too, so we'd be glad to, to do that. What's listed as item ten A, we're, we're going to, uh, if it's all right with you, amend to item nine A, uh, because it, it is the appropriation ordinance. So, item nine A, new item nine A, appropriation ordinance number twenty-five forty-two dash twenty twenty-one A.
Entertain a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-five forty-two dash twenty twenty-one A.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, that item passed.
No old business, uh, and no other ordinances and resolutions, so now we're up to twelve A, new business. Uh, the governing body is asked to consider and approve publishing a notice of budget hearing for amending the twenty-twenty-one budget to reflect actual twenty-twenty-one expenditures. The proposed date and time of the hearing is your next meeting, November sixteenth, at one-thirty PM. Jared?
Good afternoon, um, note on this one, throughout the year, we review our budget, and if we determine there's any changes or adaptations to be made, we can go through the process where we set a notice of hearing, we, um, identify those funds that are being amended, and then at that hearing, any public that wishes to come forward can express their concerns or talk about it. Um, we can address whatever items they have questions on, uh, so this is simply setting that public hearing for the next meeting at one-thirty. Any questions you have regarding any of the specific funds at this time?
Entertain a motion on this item?
I move to approve publication of the Notice of Budget Hearing for amending the twenty-twenty-one budget, setting the time and date of the hearing for one-thirty PM, November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, that item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an agreement for legal services with Dearing, Grisell, and Cunningham, PA. Randy Grisell's thirty-three years of service to the city of Garden City as city attorney come to an end on December thirty-first. His firm, Dearing, Grisell, and Cunningham, PA, have had other attorneys provide counsel in his absence. Most recently, James Delmaruth has provided counsel on easements and right-of-way acquisitions, review of local ordinances, and the UPOC and STO, and in-meeting counsel for the city commission. The addition of Jennifer Cunningham to the firm also adds experience to the firm from both a legal practice standpoint and an organizational familiarity standpoint. Previously, the city attorney services have not spelled out, have not been spelled out in an agreement. While the appointment of a city attorney is at the discretion of the governing body, staff does advise that the relationship of that appointment be defined in an agreement moving forward. At Mayor Cessna's request, the attached agreement was prepared in conjunction with Dearing, Grisell, and Cunningham, PA, then reviewed by separate outside counsel, uh, Mary Carson of Triplett Wolf Garrett's LLC, specifically, for the purpose of being placed on the governing body agenda for review and consideration. The agreement outlines rates for attorneys within the firm that perform work on behalf of the city of Garden City, and provide terms for both renewal and termination of the agreement. The language of the document is believed by both parties to closely resemble the relationship between the firm and the city while Randy Grisell has been city attorney. It specifically names Jennifer Cunningham as the city attorney, and keeps the hourly rate for legal services consistent with current rates. Staff researched city attorney agreements with comparable Kansas communities. Newton, Kansas, has a full-time attorney on staff, annual base salary of that city attorney is one-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty dollars. As a full-time employee, the city of Newton also budgets for, and pays for, full benefits and operational expenses. Dodge City, Hayes, and Salina all have contracted city attorneys. Dodge City has an agreement where the city attorney receives ninety-six-thousand dollars per year in retainer for five hours week of, five hours per week of work during the legislative session, and between twenty to twenty-five hours of work per week outside of the legislative session with a hundred-and-fifty-dollar-per-hour rate of work outside of those defined weekly hour thresholds. And just as a note, the difference there, because the legislative session is because they're city attorneys, the state representative for that area. Hayes provides a seventy-eight-thousand-dollar-per-year retainer for legal and prosecution services with a three-hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar-per-hour rate for work outside of the defined scope. Filing and defending all civil court actions, as well as matters before state and federal agencies, are outside the scope of the Hayes City Attorney Agreement. The city of Salina pays an annual sum of fifty-thousand dollars for the attendance at city commission meetings, advising elected officials on matters regarding their office, and two-hundred-and-fifty hours of legal consultation to staff on matters arising in the performance of their normal duties. Work beyond the scope and/or the two-hundred-and-fifty base allotment of hours is billed at one-hundred-and-forty-five dollars per hour for shareholders and one-hundred-and-thirty for associates. So, the, uh, your alternatives are to approve the attached agreement, uh, approve the attached, to approve the attached agreement with proposed amendment, or to not approve the attached agreement. Recommendation would be to approve the agreement. As a fiscal note, city attorney services are budgeted in a contract services line item within the Legal Services Department of the General Fund. For those of you keeping track, that's zero-zero-one-dash-one-one-four-dash-five-two-three-seven-point-zero-one. Two-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand-five-hundred dollars was approved for this line item in the adoption of the twenty-twenty-two annual budget. This line item also pays for legal services related to general fund operations and services not performed by Dearing, Grisell, and Cunningham, PA. Since twenty-nineteen, this line item's actual expenses have ranged anywhere from one-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand and change to two-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand dollars and change. The city is currently billed monthly for billable hours of the firm, the attached agreement would continue that practice. The attached agreement would continue that practice at the current billable hour rate.
Any questions?
I appreciate that you've spelled everything out. I really appreciate the quality of the agreement, so with that, I would approve the attached agreement.
There's been a motion to approve the agreement, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the purchase of sixty new golf carts for Buffalo Dunes Golf Course. Aaron?
Afternoon, Mayor Commissioners.
Hello again.
Unfortunately.
You're just doing it because you got the award, now you think you can, yeah.
Unfortunately, Jason couldn't be here today. He did receive quotes on all of these golf carts and obviously the Easy Go is substantially less than the others quoted. The reason for that is Easy Go really wants our business, yay, good for us, and had marketing dollars that could throw an extra five hundred dollars per cart and trade-in over the normal average three fifty of what they were already giving. So there's the difference. The Easy Goes are very comparable to the carts that we have now, and doing this right now, it will be expensed in twenty twenty-two, but it will lock in that particular rate of one hundred and eighteen thousand. With that all.
Any questions for Aaron on this?
I just want to point out if this number is the right. So before in two thousand seventeen, it was fifty carts for a hundred and ninety thousand.
Correct.
This time it's sixty carts for a hundred and twenty thousand.
Correct.
Yeah.
Which is significant reduction.
This is probably just on a historical note, maybe the fourth time we've done carts in my almost twenty years with the city. This is by far the least amount we've ever paid. I mean, this was a, it was a painful price to try to figure out, and there's a time where you need to do it, and sometimes just kind of had to wait for the, you know, kind of screaming deal to emerge and all that, and this was a pretty standard RFP and to come out. Speculation on my part as to why, I mean, you don't look like a give horse in the mouth for sure, but, you know, trying to figure out, I have no doubt that the national recognition of the course.
Oh, no, I agree. So will the old fleet be phased out, Aaron, or how does that work? Do they, you sell the old carts or do you?
So part of that is a trade-in value, that's where those additional funds are coming from, and the carts that we're trading in are, they're due to be out, but they're still in pretty good shape for a trade-in. So that's where that's coming from. It should happen, I believe it said, next June. So they'll, yes, they'll trade them all in and out at once.
And good point, Aaron, and kudos to Mike Mathias, our course mechanic who keeps those, and the full staff of the exterior maintenance is just important as the, as the mechanics have it, they've been well taken care of and there are some trade-in value right now.
Entertain a motion on this item?
I move to approve the purchase of sixty Easy Go golf carts for a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
I'll second, but then I've got just some questions after.
Been a second, any discussion? Commissioner Ortiz?
Just, so all of these bids were for combustible engines, right? They weren't, they were all, yeah, so that's the only question, I was just, Easy Go to me sounds like electric, so just wanted to.
They do, they do both.
Yeah, they do both, and so I didn't know if there was also like, just, you know, looking towards the future now, we don't know if it's ten years down the road, twenty, forty, fifty years down the road, but with electric coming, was there anybody looking or asking about the possibility of conversion?
So the previous set before, the ones that we actually have right now were electric, and purposely we went to the combustion engine. It seems to work better out there, a little more pep and power from what I've heard, but I probably need Jason to answer that in more detail.
And there, the ongoing maintenance is substantially less because you're usually ended up after three years switching out batteries, and that was, you know, a fairly significant percentage of what replacing the cart in general would be. So kind of a total cost of ownership analysis suggested the time before last that switching to a gas cart would be, would be a better option. Now, the reservation historically against the gas cart is the noise, but the new EFI design or whatever, they had demoed it and we bid it as an alternate last time, having, you know, kind of side-by-side comparison for the noise factor, the concern about the noise, and was determined that, you know, from twenty-five or fifty yards away, you couldn't tell the difference. So I think the course and ultimately administration and the commission at that time felt comfortable with going with the lower cost and lower total cost of ownership option, but up until that point, it had been electric for a really, really, really long time.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Item D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve Helles Construction, Inc. to replace the infield turf at Clint Lightner Field. Aaron?
So what you have before you is the turf has exceeded its lifespan and is in need of replacement, and that's obviously not a cheap thing to do. We went through Green Brush, which is a cooperative purchasing program. That's where all the turf providers are. We sent it out to seven of them, we got three responses to be, so Sprint Turf was honestly the cheapest, however, in a review of some projects that they have done, staff is recommending that we actually do not go with them. Mammoth and Helles were very close, but Helles, both from a timing standpoint and is the second cheapest out there. We do have funds to pay for this out of the rec reserve as well as the Parks Department Budget Codes, and the codes are up there. Really what happens on a turf field, specifically for baseball, especially with both wind, the high school, and the college use it, plus we have summer ball teams on there all the time, that path of the bases tends to wear down. So in that, we've selected a higher-grade turf to go back in there that will hopefully reduce the wear and tear. It also comes with a maintenance agreement for eight years. That was a twenty-five to a thousand dollar cost in there, which is, based on the others, was still one of the cheapest, and they'll be out here to maintain that annually. So that's a, that's a good thing for us and also help us with the equipment and the training to make sure that we're managing that on a weekly and monthly basis as well. Any questions about the turf?
Has there been any talk with, because I know the high school uses it as their main playing field for baseball, has there been any talk with the school district on splitting some of that cost or?
Yes. However, this is unfortunate timing, they're having to replace their fields and so are the college, all at the same time. So we're all kind of strapping in for full-on turf replacements, and I think the high school at least has its football field, but I've spoken to Drew, he's looking in to see if they can help out at all, but right now, I would anticipate us bearing the weight of that.
No, I'm grateful that you found, you know, where it's already built into the budget, I really do appreciate that, so, because this is an expensive item, but again, I think necessary, so.
Entertain a motion on this item? I'll make the motion to approve Helles Construction for the replacement of the infield turf at Clint Lightner.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you, Aaron. Governing body, but just stay where you are. The governing body is asked to consider and approve a lease agreement and equipment purchase with Midstates Fitness Equipment.
So we submitted an RFP for fitness equipment. We're actually probably two years past due, twenty nineteen, probably would have been the year to switch out at least all of the cardio equipment. Their typical lifespan is five years. However, in the layout of Core Fitness, we kind of have an excessive amount of cardio equipment, so we were able to extend the life a little bit, that plus we were shut down for three months in twenty twenty. And so this, we had actually had plans of really getting after this in twenty twenty, but lots of delays last year, so we're starting this program, and so we are going to reduce the size of cardio equipment over the next five years, and this is year one of a kind of a five-year plan to replace all that cardio equipment. In addition, we've got some other equipment that we would like to add into the facility that we believe, obviously keeping up with trends, people would use more and make it more inviting for people to sign up for memberships. And I think there should be pictures in your packet that for each one of those pieces of equipment, not only the ones called out here, but all the physical equipment below, the free weight equipment. Well, I'm sorry, one of those is a stack weight equipment, too. So generally, there's a couple of different philosophies when it comes to purchasing cardio equipment because it is such a short lifespan. So if you purchase, typically you purchase with the idea that you write off the depreciation and it becomes a tax break, and then you have an asset to your business. In our regards, we don't write that off, so one of the things that we look at is to lease the equipment and we basically pay for the depreciation and maybe a little bit more over a five-year period. What we're hoping to do is with, we're going to reduce from fifty to forty pieces of cardio equipment and over the next five years, change all of those out. This will be the first year of a lease program, so when year five comes, we're switching out. So the way this will run, and regardless of whether we're in Core Fitness or some other location, we'll make sure that, you know, this goes with us, it doesn't, has no ties to the building. The idea is that every year, we're switching out a certain amount of equipment, and so looking ahead, it's, this is a heavier year, ten pieces. We'll do eight pieces, eight pieces, seven pieces, seven pieces, that'll get us to forty. And so we'll reduce, like, the cost of next year's lease, not this lease, this lease runs for five years, the one we would add into that will actually, we anticipate being less.
So Aaron, on the lease payments, do they provide a certain amount of, like, warranty or do they come and do with repairs?
They warranty it for the entirety of the lease, that's another benefit of doing that.
So who makes the repairs? Do your staff make the repairs or do they come out and make the repairs?
No, Midstates. Midstates would warranty, they'll do a, just a preventative maintenance check annually plus any warranty work that comes up as it goes.
Any other questions?
Aaron, you mentioned ten pieces this year, is this, there's eight here, is the Precor and?
Sorry, I should say two. The cross-ramp is.
Two, four, six, eight.
Two, four, six, eight.
Oh, this one right here?
Yeah.
This is actually four pieces of equipment in this?
Well, no, I'm sorry, that, let me pull my.
Because the list here for sixty-nine, two, four, six.
Precor AMT, the Stera GTL, two Precor treadmill, two water rowers.
Okay.
That's what that one's supposed to be, is probably two water rowers. And the water rowers were, should have been included in that. That is the correct pricing, though.
The sixty-nine nine fifty is the correct pricing?
Yeah, because this would total somewhere around sixty-one or sixty-two.
Yes. So that is the correct total cost. What we're missing in there is the two water rowers, which are in the picture.
And it's in, it's in the invoice, too, though.
Yeah, I saw the picture, right, yeah.
Yeah, it's in the proposal.
So my apologies for that typo.
Entertain a motion on this item, then?
I move to approve the purchase of fitness equipment and enter into a lease agreement with Midstates Fitness Equipment and authorize the mayor to sign that agreement.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you. The governing body is asked to consider and approve Spawn Ranch for the design and construction of a new skate park in Fennip Scout Park.
Hi, Aaron.
Thank you. So we did video interviews last Thursday of three firms that were selected as finalists. Spawn Ranch was selected as the committee's choice out of that interview process. I think really what kind of set them apart from the feedback was that not only did Aaron Spawn make a trip out here to investigate the site, he, you know, he had ideas, he had traveled around town, and you could tell that he had basically done his research and tried to get to know us personally versus the other two did not choose to do that. So we think we've made a good recommendation here and it's before you, and we would come back once we have a contract written for you to approve that contract, but we would ask for your approval in selecting this firm for design build.
I would, I'd move that we approve, authorize the selection of this, how do you say that? Spawn Ranch to negotiate a contract for completing design and construction of a skate park in the Fennip Scout Park.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item?
And I was on the committee to review these, and really, we had three amazing companies.
Really?
Any one of those really could do a good job at Spawn. Ranch did a really good job, like Aaron said, of coming out and actually listening to our community and kind of tailoring things to us specifically and really good with some plans for community engagement with those people, so they definitely came to the top from that committee.
Any other discussion? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Item G, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the appointment of Misty Wheaton to the Park and Recreation Advisory Board.
So as it said in the MO, we have, I can't say that our, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board is giving a recommendation because we haven't met Quorum, so we've pushed this ahead so we can get Quorum and start having our meetings again. Misty submitted an application through the city's website, expressed interest in serving on this board. We reached out to her and contacted, and she submitted, she had planned to come to a meeting, but was, obviously, we hadn't had one since we figured out we needed a board member. This is to replace Matt Meyer's position, who has now moved out of town.
Entertain a motion on this item?
I'll make the motion to approve Misty Wheaton to the Parks and Recreation Board for a term ending in January twenty twenty-five.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Don't anticipate any action on the executive session that is item twelve H, so if we want to skip over that and move to the consent agenda, there's two items on the consent agenda, and, yeah, so that if approved would be items one and two.
Entertain a motion on that one?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda for approval.
There's been a motion to approve the consent agenda, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second, any discussion on that item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
If you'd like to do your commissioner's reports.
Commissioner's reports, and then we'll go back to the, back to the executive session after the commissioner's reports are done. So Commissioner Ortiz?
Yeah, so I'd just like to ask people, reminder that today is the time to vote, so polls close at seven P.M. I'll be there at six forty-five to cast my vote, so I just always like going last, it's just, or try to be last, so. Gets, it allows me to sneak in and sneak out, so. But I think Halloween just, you know, was a great time for kids and people, and it was good to see people out, you know, with trunk or treats, those who had participated and attended, that was awesome to see. Facebook was just flooded with pictures and awesome costumes. I kind of said before that you're going to see some amazing costumes this year, and there was, there was like just some awesome costumes that were worn by people, and it was just amazing to see that and exciting, so. Also attended the fire truck ceremony this morning, that's, that's great, we just got a new fire truck that's stationed now at Station Two on West Mary Street, so, or East Mary Street, and that was a great attendance there. And that was a great attendance there, they had cookies, which I took a cookie, but I haven't eaten it yet. I'm waiting, I'm waiting to savor that cookie. But it was great attendance, firemen that were there pushed the fire truck into the fire station. So that was great ceremony on that part. The McGrath meeting as well, it was kind of busy today for the staff and city. So the McGrath report was, was given this morning to the firefighters at 7:00 AM. It's just a lot of information to kind of retain and, and just take into consideration for the, you know, the changes and the new departments here to come in the future, so good job on that presentation. Also, just like to give people notice that the fireworks for veterans is coming up on the 13th. So if you get out and see the parade, I think the parade starts at, let me get my notes here.
10:00 AM it says?
10:00 AM, nine, yeah, 10:00 AM, is that right?
Yep.
Yes, yeah, Veterans Day Parade at 10, so it's a great, great way to celebrate Veterans Day with a parade and then later on there's some fireworks, so just like to commemorate those in service.
Are you done? Commissioner Ortiz? All right, Commissioner Euler.
Well, first of all, yeah, the pre-meeting was really interesting, especially, you know, as you're reading through the report. I think what it does is it gives a really nice kind of a blueprint for the next fire chief, you know, to be able to take that and really just go forward with those recommendations. And I, I'm just, I'm excited to see what happens in that department. I know Jennifer, thank you for everything that you've done as acting fire chief. I mean, that came through in the report, you know, just how, you know, some of those issues had sort of been resolved. And I know, you know, with the staffing issues and just the morale and so I think it's great when other, especially other fire chiefs, when they come in and they do those studies and they can acknowledge that. So I'm looking forward to seeing just in the future where some of those recommendations go. Also, you know, as we get into the last quarter of the year, this is really kind of an opportunity for people to volunteer in the commu, in the community. I know that places like Salvation Army are looking for bell ringers. A lot of places are also looking for help with food drives and different things. And so if you have some time, if you have an hour or two to spare, it's just a great team building opportunity for a business or for your family to get out and really learn about volunteerism. Also, congratulations on the Leading Edge Award. I think that, when I heard about how this was the only municipality to get that, but then not only that, but then who you were competing up against and that there were only, what, four other water parks in the country and it, you know, I mean, it's very impressive and so good job on all of that. And I just think that's a lot to be proud of. And it was interesting to go to the gun range groundbreaking and partake in that, but I, I mean, it was a long time coming and so it was, it was worth the sandblasting and it was worth the, you know, the opportunity to be there because it really is going to be an asset, not just for the police department, but for the community as a whole. So thank you for everyone who did that, that's all.
Commissioner Dick?
All right, first thing is just like Commissioner Ortiz says, remember to go out and vote. I would much rather see everybody vote possible and maybe you don't get the turnout that you want rather than the turnout, the result that you want, but only a few people vote. So please go out and vote. Also, recognize the partnerships, the great partnerships that the high school and the community college has done in the community. We were talking about that with the McGrath study about the partnerships that's there with the community college, with the fire department and then the building sciences that we have at the high school and at the community college. They're just great partnerships and we just keep on continually growing them. So that's really good to see those grow. Again, if you took a look at the sales tax, it looks like we're up about 8% over last year, which again was a record-setting year last year, so good news on that. Congratulations to Aaron and Jennifer with the water park, but also with the, with the, with the new skate park that's coming out. I mean, we're really starting to invest in, in some of the quality of life things that makes a city not just a good place to, I mean, we have sales tax, we have jobs, we have good education, but also those things like having a good community water park that's affordable. This is going to be a premier skate park for the whole Midwest region. So glad that we're moving in on, on that and going forward and making our city great in that way. Also, just remember now that it's getting closer to winter time that the weather is an issue. So when you're traveling, be sure to pay attention to the weather. There's, there always is a lot of accidents that happen around the holiday times. So just keep that in mind, especially because probably last year you didn't travel as much as you're used to. And then the final thing is with holidays coming up, please keep people in mind, your loved ones, your friends, your families, and maybe your neighbors who might have had loss over the last couple of years. Keep in mind that the holidays is a hard time for some people and reach out and, and just be helpful if you can, keep them in mind and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, and Commissioner Andrew.
Well, you guys said a lot, but I don't care, I'm going to say a lot too. Well, I just want to say thank you, I know that it, today is, you know, a time, your day to, a chance to really cast your vote. And I do want to say thank you to the Fannie County, to really, opening up on Saturday, I was able to take my dad, who has both vision and hearing issues. And it was really nice to be able to go down, take some time and it was, just they're really making it available, early voting. And so otherwise, make sure you vote today before 7 o'clock, if you're 6:45, you might see Commissioner Ortiz. I do want to say again, thank you for the fall cleanup. People don't realize, people say thank you all the time out in the community and it really is something that the city does. I mean, we, we take our, the thank yous for you as a city and I know people really appreciate all of the work that the crews go through and I'll tell you, they leave everything looking really great. They really do clean up and that, you leave stuff out there, it's all picked up, so I do want to say thank you for that. It's really a big part of what we can do as a city. I also want to talk about the lights at night out there. If you've not, I've been able to, some people have come in and visited, you know, before the big pool was really hard to see at night and now you go out there and, I mean, it's all lit up and, I mean, it is impressive even in the dark. And so I just want to say thank you for the award and accepting the award on behalf of our community. You know, it's the community who turned out for all of the different opportunities to talk about what they wanted. It's the community who's paying, which would now cost over, you know, double that $10 million more, about 20 or 27 million dollars we did for 14. And I'll tell you, it's a standout facility and I'm glad other people are recognizing that, so thank you. But if you've not been out there at night, it is really, it's a really neat, neat place. And so I've had a chance to take a lot of people out there. I also want to talk about the young men and I know there will be women also from the construction who came out from the college and from the high school, that is really great to see. Hopefully we can see, keep these young people employed here in Garden City. These are the kind of people that we need as tradespeople in our community and I'll tell you, so hopefully that people are watching and saying, yeah, these are the people I want to hire. So we've got lots of jobs available, so please, young people, stay here in Garden City. The pushing in ceremony was really, you know, there's traditions that you take advantage of and it's not every day we spend $750,000 on anything. But I'll tell you, having a brand-new fire truck, this is a kind of a, it might be a once-in-a-20-year event and so, you know, the, it's, it was a really neat opportunity. If you didn't get to be there in person, hopefully you can see it on Facebook or on YouTube, but it was a really neat time and it really showed the camaraderie of the fire department. And just again, both stations and all, everyone showing up, even retired firefighters, and just really taking part in something that's very exciting for our community. The McGrath study was very interesting, I'm excited about the recommendations. Hopefully, we will also keep a track, when they did the one for the police department, we kept track of all of the things that were completed. Hopefully that will happen again with this because I, I think they had made some really valid recommendations. I think they were very careful to make recommendations that would make a difference. So hopefully we're going to keep track of that. I don't want to talk about the gun range, I ate a lot of stuff, I have no idea what it was. The last thing I want to say is thank you to Barb Larson and also Neil Austin. You know, I, when community members come and talk before the commission, it is so important because, you know, we are, we are five people, but, and then, you know, the city staff, you know, lots of times you walk by, you drive by, things you don't see, but your input into the city is what makes a difference for the city. And so I really appreciate Barb and also Neil's just input into the city and coming up and letting us know about not only how much they appreciate the city, but also things that we as a city can improve. And with that, I'm done.
All right, I know the commissioners covered pretty much everything that I was going to cover. The only thing that I would reiterate is it is election day, please go out, make your voice be heard and vote. That's the, that's one of our, our great rights that we have in, in the United States, that we can vote on the citizens that actually lead and move our communities forward locally, but also in the state and nationally. So today is a very important election. I did notice that, you know, our employments are up at the airport and that's one of the, the items that's on the ballot. But, you know, like it was mentioned at the State of the City that, you know, that is the front door to, one of the front doors to our community and it's very important that we have something that really shows off our community and it's an important issue that is on the ballot as well. But again, make your voice heard and, and vote. I always think it's interesting when people, you know, are, are discussing the ways of the nation, the state, and even talking to me about the city and, you know, it's like, well, if you don't vote, then you don't really have a voice, I mean, you do, but, but making your voice heard through voting is, is very important. So again, try to beat Commissioner Ortiz to the polling place because the polls are open till 7 o'clock this evening.
Mayor, I, if you, if you're done.
I am done, yes, sir.
I just wanted to catch you before you went towards the executive session. Where I, I would like for the, the governing body to consider taking about a 10-minute break and then we're going to come back and we're going to redo an agenda item and Randy will walk you through the procedure for that. But I think there's an agenda item that we need to, we need to present you some more information on that wasn't included in the packet, just to make sure that you were making the decision based on all of the information.
Okay.
And so I would like to.
We'll take a, we'll take a 10-minute recess, we'll be back in session at 2:51 and we'll, do we know what the item is?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be.
12B?
Yeah, reconsideration of 12B.
D?
D, sorry.
12D?
Yeah, the Clint Leitner field, infield turf replacement.
All right, we'll be back at 2:51.
That's when Dan, that's when Dan did that, I was like, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember bidding wars.
Okay.
It's your word, John and Janet, one of them was the mayor. And they were in a bidding war, sitting back-to-back, and the rest of us were going, we have to pay for part of that.
Yeah, I know.
And then there was one-
And we're sitting there going, okay.
Yeah, a couple of years ago, which is-
Somehow I get roped into it every year.
One of the benefits of retirement.
This year, he'll be like- That's probably the- Ten thousand dollars invested in that trophy case.
We thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
That Gord Ronaldo.
Yeah, that was the-
All right, Randy, would you like, well, you want to?
You back on?
Yeah, we're back in session, regular session.
Yes, I, staff has had a brief discussion about this item, and we believe that some additional consideration needs to be given to item twelve D. That was the, the contract awarded to Hellis Construction to remove the infill, replace the infill turf at Clint Lightner Field. The discussion by Aaron at the time was that there were three bidders, I believe, and that Sprint was the lowest bid, Hellis was the second lowest, and the other bidder was the third lowest. Under Kansas law, the governing body has the obligation to award a purchase or a construction contract to the lowest responsible bidder. And should the staff and governing body determine that a bid should be awarded to someone other than the lowest bidder, then it needs to discuss the articulable facts supporting awarding of the bid to the bidder that was not the lowest bid. Lowest responsible bid means something more than just the lowest bid. Otherwise, you have an obligation to award contracts to whoever bid the lowest, regardless of quality of work or, or previous experience with the bidder or service references. So there's certain factors that you can consider. I think they're set out in the city's purchasing policy as well. But I think that there needs to be a discussion with staff about the reason for recommendation to award the, the project to Hellis as opposed to Sprint. So what I am recommending that you do is, is someone make a motion to rescind the previous approval of awarding the purchase contract to Hellis. A motion, the motion, then a second. Vote on that. If there's a majority vote on that motion to rescind, then you can reconsider the issue again. And you can make the decision based on whatever is presented to you. You don't have to, to, to award the contract to Hellis if you decide that there's not sufficient factual basis to do so.
Okay.
So I move that we rescind the item twelve D, the governing body to consider the approval of Hellis Construction to replace the infill turf at Clint Lightner Field.
There's been a motion to rescind, is there a second?
I'll second.
There's been a second, any discussion on that item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item does pass.
So the matter now comes on you, as in the original fashion, you're being asked to consider and approve awarding a contract to Hellis Construction to replace the infill turf at Clint Lightner Field. And so staff will present to you the recommendation, as well as the facts supporting the awarding of the contract to Hellis as opposed to any other bidder.
Okay.
Mayor, commissioners, my apologies for not having this more clear. Just so we know what we're talking about. Sprint Turf came in at, on an eight-year cost of two hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Hellis came in at two hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars for an eight-year cost. And then Mammoth Construction was two hundred and sixty-one doll, two hundred and sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars for an eight-year cost. Each company submits differently as far as their maintenance plan. So breaking it over eight years made it consistent to compare costs on an even playing field. The reason we recommended Hellis over Sprint Turf, which is the low bid, is based on some research of project installations that they have done. There have been several warranty issues. There have been several installation issues that relate back to the quality of their product that we're concerned if we go with them would be repeated in our facility.
With Sprint?
With Sprint.
Okay.
Review of Hellis and the projects that they have done did not turn the same results. Therefore, that's why we recommended Hellis, is based on the industry professionals that we talked to, some of our coworkers that have their installations done for both Sprint Turf and Hellis, and the responses that we had back. We are, we are questioning the quality of the product that Sprint would actually install in Clint Lightner, versus we don't have that question with Hellis.
So was the product, you're talking about the, now, the installation and the warranty, I get those, so is the product, the approximate same as the product? Or you're saying, because I knew you talked about the quality that you ups, up, you bought a little bit better quality turf from, or you asked Helen, is it the same quality of the turf, or?
So every, so each turf company has their own unique kind of thing that they do with the turf, that they sell as why their turf is better. When we looked at, at all three of these, we didn't look at the baseline, we looked at the next step up, based on the wear and tear of the baseball field and how much higher impact that field has with the daily use from basically end of February through the end of August. So we wanted to go more than just the baseline. So the Grand Slam upgrade is Sprint Turf's upgrade to that next level, and how they attempt to improve the quality and durability of a baseball field. Matrix Helix with shape memory is Hellis. So again, they, they call these different things. At the end of the day, you're looking at the weave on the bottom, how it's sewn into the bottom fabric, what kind of fabric they're putting in there to kind of hold the sand and rubber in, what the length of the material is going to be, maintenance and upkeep. And that's what we tried to rate on with both price, finding out, are people happy with their installations? Rather than necessarily their references, because references always give a good story, we looked at people that had their products that, that we kind of sought out on our own.
My only other question, is the twenty-five thousand dollar the one-time fee, was that consistent across all three of them? Or was that something that?
No, it, it ranged, and that's why trying to break it out on an eight-year cost, which would be the common denominator. Hellis was eight years at twenty-five thousand. Sprint Turf was seventeen, nine, twenty for annual maintenance for seven years. And then five thousand dollars annually for Mammoth Construction. So there, when we talk about the upgrades, the equipment being provided, we did ask for a logo to be on that turf, but we included that for every single one of them. And then the annual maintenance. Trying to baseline that out over eight years to get a common denominator for the cost of ownership. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, if you, yeah, you can-
Any other questions? Entertain a motion then to approve, or entertain a motion on this item then? If the commission would so, would like to move forward on this item? I'll make the motion to approve the Hellis Construction Incorporated for the replacement of the infill turf at Clint Lightner and authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second, any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for letting us redo that.
Now on to the executive session.
Executive session, that's correct.
Which is item H under new business. Would somebody like to entertain a motion on that? And then Mike, Matt, and Randy would be the individuals in the meeting, and it'd be approximately fifteen minutes, from what I understand.
I move that we go into executive session pursuant to KSA seven-five dash four-three-one-nine-B six, pertaining to preliminary discussions relating to acquisition of real property. In that meeting would be Matt Allen, Mike Muirhead, Randy Griselle, for fifteen minutes, which would be like three fifteen.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion on that item?
The reason would be possible expansion of public access property.
If you would like to add that?
The reason would be for possible-
Possible expansion-
Expansion of public access property. That's not my make it. Repeating lines.
Got it.
Got it. Any other discussion? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. We'll go into executive session.
And our channel-